Good evening. Today is Monday, December 14, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the objective of justice for all. All right.
Pierre, can we vote or not?
Yeah, we will vote. Yeah, so that's right. I should call the meeting to order. So do I have a motion to open the meeting? Laurie, Cynthia second. All in favor? Okay. All right. So we will start off as usual with comments by the board. Let's start off with, I'll just give you some time Cynthia, since you just got here. Start with Laurie. Laurie, you have anything?
Just very happy to be back and everybody here as well. And I am looking forward to a wonderful holiday season and I hope that everyone else is. I know how hard you've been working trying to keep our schools open and keep continuity of education in place for our students. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate all of you and I pray that you have a wonderful, healthy holiday season.
Great, thank you. Laura?
Thanks, Pete. Yeah, just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. I hope everyone has a very happy, healthy, and restful couple of weeks and that's it. Thanks, Pete.
Awesome. Teres?
I also want to wish everybody happy and healthy holidays. Thank everybody for their efforts in keeping schools open and keeping children engaged both remotely and in the classroom. I also, we're coming into a time where vaccines are going to be offered to people and by all means make an informed decision, do what you're comfortable with, but please get informed because I do think it's important for us to end this. So I want everyone to at least consider it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the same as the former people have said.
Like, thank you so much to Tuckahoe School District, teachers, staff, everyone, and the students, they've all been so great. And really, yes, take this time, I know it's probably going to be well needed for everyone to sort of regroup, especially the teachers. It's been, you know, Dr. Goodman, it's been kind of a roller coaster ride this last month. So really take the time off, it's well needed, the rest, and rejuvenate. And let's hope that 2021 is going to be a better year for us.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yes, same. Happy holidays to our Patter community and a special thanks as well, I wanted to say to our staff and our administration and our teachers and everybody for just keeping the boat afloat for this year. I mean, it's been more than afloat, it's been actually gone very, very well. And it's really, it is a time, for me at least, to reflect on how much work and effort's put into that and how much I appreciate it and we all appreciate it. So, thank you very much. And I want to particularly acknowledge Dr. Goodman for just the tremendous amount of work. I don't think she sleeps at all. I think she's still awake 24/7. And it's like, a lot of times I want to give her a call and I was like, I'm just going to leave her alone because I know how busy she is. So I just, you know, thank you to you and everybody as well. And look, with the vaccines starting to be distributed, it really feels, for me, it feels good. It feels like we're turning a corner. Maybe it's a little more, you know, more impression than anything else, although I think it's legitimate, but it feels, it feels good. I'm very optimistic for the months to come. It feels like there's light at the end of the tunnel.
I was at work today, we got our emails saying who was eligible for the first round, and it was like Santa came.
Yeah.
People are just like, and we're starting on Wednesday.
And to me, in my mind, I'm just, it feels like it's very, very reasonable and very plausible that our kids in this district were back to normal next year, next September. That's what I'm hoping for and I think it's very, very plausible that that could happen now that this vaccine's starting to be distributed. If we can have a normal year next year, that would be great. That would be fantastic. So, anyway, the only other thing I had, and I don't know if you were planning on covering it, but I wanted to bring to everybody's attention the concerts that are coming up. Were you going to say that?
You can say that.
Okay. And hopefully they're not going to be disturbed by the weather.
And it was on Facebook, too.
Yeah, so I know, one of the real pearls of this district is our music program. I think everybody knows that, but it is sort of a hidden secret to those outside the district how strong and fantastic our music program is. And I think we can all use a pick-me-up. And so I wanted to make sure I was aware of the virtual concerts that are coming up from the district. And starting tomorrow, Tuesday, December 15th, the William E. Cottle Orchestra will perform their holiday concert via Zoom. And then on Thursday, the 17th, the Cottle Band in Concert will perform via Zoom. And then Friday, December 18th, it will be the High School/Middle School Strings and Select Ensemble also via Zoom. Will those be threatened with the weather at all? Because it's all remote.
No, they, no, it's all remote. And that people can click on it, will also be available after if you don't want to see it live, we'll have it up.
Yeah, so hopefully everyone will check that out.
It'll be on our website, it's on our Facebook page, so like it. As you said, our students are incredibly talented, as are our teachers.
Yep, 100%. Okay. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Goodman, if you have any comments.
I'm going to save my comments to do the COVID-19 micro cluster information, but I also want to thank Mr. Chino, the Director of Curriculum, Ms. Dunn, who also, both of them are up all night with me, trust me, the principals, all the administration, we have been working really hard, and of course, the teachers and staff and all the support staff. It has been quite a ride, but I am really happy that we do what we do and that we brought back K-5 every day that we're in the district for those who want their children to be as a gift. So we are trying the best that we can. Sometimes we are really affected. Everybody doesn't understand that when we lose faculty for various reasons, the way that we have to socially distance, we're not able to put classes together, and we have a lot of faculty that are affected by this. And one student could affect a lot of people. And, you know, certainly the bus runs also play into it, departmentalized, there's a lot of staff out at Cottle right now. And we have, I really thank the principals and a special shout-out to Mr. Marash because we have kept it going pretty long with as many students as we have in the district. And also, for the first year that we have won leadership in the middle school, high school, it's been quite incredible. And again, the faculty and staff have done a wonderful job. So also, I wish everybody a very happy holiday and I just love this community and you all deserve all the best and thank you for your support.
All right, thank you. Next comments from our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Lu.
I'll just say that we are working on finding ways to purchase and acquire the things that we need to keep the schools open and we are hopeful that we will have some positive news from the state regarding state aid, we still are waiting to hear. And at the same time, we're working on beginning to accumulate data for next year's budget and the economic outlook is challenging, but we're hoping that we can find a way to work within our means and find the things we need for the community for next September. And there'll be more information on details as we go forward.
I actually skipped over an agenda item, which was number two, Superintendent Introduction of Student Liaisons, so, very important. Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I love that we have student liaisons representing our district at our public meetings. So I will introduce each of them and they have a presentation for you. First, Juliette Corsari is a senior at Tuckahoe High School. She has a GPA of 3.65 and has been on the high honor roll every quarter. The top three colleges that she is applying to are CU Boulder, Virginia Tech, and University of Iowa. In college, she would like to major in international business and minor in real estate. Juliette has been class treasurer, athletic club treasurer, and the captain of the girls' varsity soccer team. She is also president of the Boy Scouts Venue Crew 343, where she completes her community service hours. Now Juliette, and she's also up there with an injury, but she's quite a trooper.
Good evening, Dr. Goodman and the Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I have been the class of 2021's treasurer since my sophomore year and the athletic club treasurer my junior year. I have also taken on the responsibility of the National Honor Society Secretary. During my junior year, I was awarded the St. Michael's College Book Award for Academic Success and Community Service Involvement. Through THS, I participated in Habitat for Humanity Yearbook and Ski Club. I am also a player on our Tuckahoe Varsity Girls Soccer Team, where I've been captain since my freshman year, and I'm also the team manager for the Tuckahoe Girls Varsity Basketball Team. This year, I am currently the class of 2021's treasurer and we are trying to find new ways to fundraise while maintaining safety protocols. One of the school's goals this year was to perform community service in many ways. Currently, the National Honor Society is asking for non-perishable food donations to give to our local organizations and to help our local communities. Also, in the Yearbook Club, we are creating fun ways to showcase how we have all been dealing with this pandemic and how our school days have been. Academically at Tuckahoe, the second quarter progress reports will end on December 11th and they will be available to see for the middle school on December 17th and for the high school on December 16th. We are excited to announce that over 233 kids ranging from middle and high school have demonstrated great success in the classroom. The numbers show that 79 made the principal's list, 94 made high honor roll, and 60 made honor roll. Our grade levels have been sponsoring spirit days such as pajama day, sports day, and the holiday dress-up day every Monday. On December 2nd, we had a G.O. elections where we had 16 students elected. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next is Jayden Gerald, who is a senior at Tuckahoe High School. I have had the pleasure of speaking with Jayden on several occasions and he always presented as not only an outstanding student, but he is also a very kind, caring, and intuitive young man who stands up for social causes. Jayden is applying to Villanova, Howard University, which are his first choices, and Drexel University, where he plans to major in environmental engineering with a minor in mechanical engineering. Jayden is a true leader and has shown his leadership skills in clubs and sports teams for which he is involved in our district. Jayden?
Good evening, Dr. Goodman and the Board of Education, and thank you for inviting me to speak. Also, hi, Mom.
Hi, Buddy.
If you don't already know my name, it is Jayden Gerald. I'm a member of both the varsity basketball team and the varsity football team. I also have had the pleasure of participating in both the stock club and the A.V. club. I am a proud member of the National Honor Society here at Tuckahoe. I am an intern at the District 10 County Legislature's Office of Damon Meyer and I run the audiovisual ministry at my church, Shiloh Baptist Church. The top three schools I'm applying to, as she said, are Villanova, Howard, and Drexel. Outside of pledging for Omega Psi Phi and becoming a member of the National Society of Black Engineers, I aspire to be a major in environmental engineering and a minor in mechanical engineering. This year, in the midst of a pandemic, Tuckahoe High School has still been fighting to keep our students, to help our students feel included through extracurricular activities. This year, we have over 31 clubs, of which I am personally involved with two. In the stock club, we learn about the stock market and which businesses to invest money in. And in the A.V. club, we help put together plays run by the drama department and also help run the chorus and band concerts. The Board of Education goals for the clubs this year are to promote citizenship, citizenship skills, community service participation, civil engagement, intercultural awareness, human rights, thinking and research skills, and interpersonal skills, I'm sorry. They also want to increase outreach to students highlighting extracurricular opportunities and activities promoting mental health and physical health during this pandemic. This year, the girls' and boys' varsity soccer teams had the privilege to play. Both teams had numerous players that received all section and all league honors. For the girls' varsity team, Ella Bordwell received all section honors with an honorable mention being given to Gianna Gilard. For all league, Isabel Corsari, Juliette Corsari, Daniello Labrini, Lina Latizia, Eva Kazaza, Sofia Colasacco, Ella Bordwell, and Gianna Gilard. Irene Maris, Eva Nello, and Brianna Bojolay received honorable mentions for all league. For the varsity boys' soccer team, Jack Dardy, Nicolino Marcocchia, and Federico Vaca received all league. Jason Mackus and Sean Suarez received honorable mentions for all section. This year, the junior varsity team was also fortunate enough to play. They had seven games and 26 players, including eight middle school students who participated. Outside of the many great athletes who received recognition, our own coach, Stephanie Martino, the varsity girls' soccer team was named Coach of the Year for our league. Although girls' varsity tennis did not win a match this year, they gained a great deal of experience and learned many skills. The girls showed tremendous improvement and they are looking forward to playing again next year. For our winter sports, basketball has a starting date of January 4th, 2021. However, it still needs to be approved by both the Governor's Office and the New York State High School Athletics Association. However, boys' and girls' bowling will take place starting on January 4th, 2021. All matches are played at Bowlerland Lanes in the Bronx and will begin at 4:00 p.m. Family ID will open up on Monday, December 7th for registration. For bowling only, and basketball will be added once given approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Lu, Juliette, and Jayden. That was really informative and thanks very much for taking the time to do that. We really appreciate it. We love it when our students come to our board meetings. It's the best part of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. You did a great job and you can go now and do your studies. Thank you so much. Or you can stay.
These days, really scintillating stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have comments by our PTA. Ms. Millie couldn't make it tonight, but she did email us some comments that she wanted to have read, so I'm going to go ahead and read them out loud on behalf of her. So she wrote, first point was, "The Tuckahoe PTA wishes to thank those who supported our Giving Tuesday fundraiser on December 1st. Giving Tuesday is a national day devoted to supporting charitable organizations and our PTA raised over $700 to help fund student programming thanks to our generous supporters." "The PTA Ways and Means Committee has been selling personalized holiday ornaments and keychains as a fundraiser for PTA programming. These items are adorned with tigers and cubs wearing face masks in honor of 2020, and we've sold out of the ornaments. We have a few keychains left available, but ordering closes tonight at midnight. Check your email for the link or go to our PTA Facebook or Instagram page. We encourage the community to spend their money locally this holiday season, and always, so that states, so that sales tax, meter fees, and other town revenue can benefit from our school's budget, but if our school's budget, excuse me. As a reminder to the community, please celebrate the holidays with safety in mind so that our schools can reopen and our community can stay safe. It's important that teachers and staff feel safe teaching our kids. Happy holidays to all." Thank you, Ms. Millie, for those comments. Appreciate it. Right. Do you have a question? Do you want to give your presentations?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so next I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Goodman for her presentation on the testing.
Tonight, I will provide information about the Governor's new micro cluster strategy and what it means for our school district. In previous presentations, I have discussed the huge effort we have made to mitigate transmission in our school buildings. This new micro cluster approach comes with new testing requirements and this presentation will serve to update you on our plan's procedures and processes if we are designated a micro Tonight, I will cover the four areas that you see here. I will provide an overview of the different zones and what it means for our school's ability to stay open. I will also explain the COVID-19 testing requirements and how Tuckahoe plans to conduct these tests on site if we are required to do so. Lastly, I will provide some concluding thoughts and take any questions. The Governor's Micro Cluster Initiative is an alternative to the widespread closures seen last spring. Instead of closing down the entire state, for example, the Micro Cluster Initiative is designed to target communities based on geographic population and epidemiological factors. It is important that we recognize that our schools are safe. Data has been reviewed internationally, nationally, and at the state level and has demonstrated that schools are not a significant driver of spread. Students and staff have followed the safety protocols in school, proved to limit the spread of COVID-19. We have seen this firsthand as students and faculty and staff have adapted to restrictions and protocols. In schools, we see our responsibility to ourselves, others, and our community. We believe that students benefit from being in school. These are the three zones in the Governor's strategies. As mentioned, what constitutes a zone is based on different variables. For example, larger towns or cities could be broken into different zones. As of December 11, the zone designations are based on the 10-day rolling average for test positivity, hospital admissions, and hospital capacity. The cluster-based approach is implied in TIDAM with hospitalization rates, and this continues to change how we're doing this, but this is the most recent. Micro cluster zones will now be designated when? In yellow, 3% positivity rate over 10 days and the cluster is in the top 10% for hospital admissions per capita. Orange, 4% positivity over 10 days, or hospital capacity is projected to hit 85% within three weeks. And red, hospital capacity will hit 90% within three weeks. All hospitals must stay below 85% capacity by either adding additional beds or reducing elective surgeries. Governor Cuomo has said he is reviewing data to make determinations based on the different zones. We in Tuckahoe continue to adjust the procedures when our government either changes or the facts change. The zones have implications for businesses, gatherings, and schools. We will discuss the impact on schools in the upcoming slides. The state website also has a link that you can look at to see if our schools are designated. Here are the cases as of 12/10. These numbers represent the cases as of December 10. It is important to note that some of our neighbors are in the first column, reporting some of the highest numbers of cases. Of course, it is important to recognize that population factors in it. New Rochelle has a population of almost 80,000 and East Chester has a population of 19,000. Other examples are Bronsville, which may have 6,323, Mamaroneck has 29,563. So you can see where we stand, and the next slide will give you a better idea. So I don't know if any of you have gone to this map, it is available on the State Department of Health website, I mean, the Westchester Department of Health website for this kind of, looking at various towns in Westchester and cities. When we focus on our geographic area that falls within our school district, here is the most recent data. With a total of 222 cases, 19 active, and one case here, one new case here in Tuckahoe, you'll see similar numbers in Bronsville and much higher numbers in East Chester. As you know, our district hosts students from all three of these locations and the population in them are very different. I also wanted to include this because now the governor just recently has put hospitalizations in how he figures out micro clusters. The increasing numbers of COVID-19 cases, as you know, could have demonstrated and have demonstrated other towns as micro clusters. Recent changes to the calculation here means hospitalization rates are also factored in. While this specific calculation for our community has not been shared, I am including an indicator that I found shared by the governor on Sunday of our Mid-Hudson region that puts us at 25% Here's some information on the schools and zones and what we would have to do. So in the yellow zone, and these are, again, modified requirements from the last time that I even wrote to you, that in the yellow zone, we would have to provide 20% random testing on a bi-weekly basis. Continued testing is only required if school positivity rates are higher than the zone positivity rate. And again, the guidance is subject to change. If the positivity rate is higher, testing must continue on a regular basis. Now, in terms of the other zones, the orange and red, where we have had changes recently in what the governor expects us to do. At first, what we had to do in orange and red would make it very hard to stay open. But here, you see it's changed. There are similarities between the orange and red zones. The major differences are emboldened. In the orange zone, 20% of our in-person population must be tested on a monthly basis, whereas in the red zone, 30% must be tested on a monthly basis. This must be spread out over the month, so you'll notice that 10% must be tested bi-weekly in orange and 15% bi-weekly in red. So you can't just do all your testing on one day, you have to show that you did it over the month. Testing continues on a rolling basis, monthly, until the governor determines an area is no longer a hotspot and the zone designation changes. We've spent a lot of time together on our testing procedures and I just want to give you an overview of what we would do. The state asks that we randomly select students and staff. Only students whose parents provided consent and are attending in person would be tested. Remote instruction students would not be tested. If you are randomly selected to participate, we would contact if you were a staff member or parents via an email blast to you and a phone call. There is no consequence, this question has come up to me, if a student or family does not consent to testing procedure and/or refuse to participate. If schools aren't able to test the required percentage of our population, schools would then be required to close. The district has partnered with the Westchester County Department of Health Limited Service Laboratory. After a training, district health personnel and the athletic trainer will be able to administer the Bi-Nex Now, which is the non-invasive COVID-19 rapid test. This will provide us and you with results within 15 minutes. As a preparatory measure, Tuckahoe Union Free School District sent a consent survey so that we were prepared regarding the willingness of our parents to test. This was done to build a pool of willing testers from our in-person students. A hard copy of the consent form will be signed at the test site and we will also, when we invite you, have an electronic one that you can also print out. We will begin by randomly selecting students and staff in accordance with the state required percentages. If selected to be randomly tested, parents and staff will be notified again through a blackboard connects and a phone call. As a reminder, only those randomly selected and notified will be tested. Appointments will then be established at different buildings through an appointment calendar. Schools can also accept written test results from a healthcare provider. Schools can also accept written test results from a healthcare provider. The testing process is listed here. So we will ask that selected individuals arrive at the testing location at least 10 minutes before your scheduled time. This will give you the opportunity to check in and clerical staff and us to ensure distancing and safety protocols. The COVID-19 Bynext Now Rapid Test will be administered by either the onsite nurse or the athletic trainer. Parents will receive the results shortly after the test is conducted, and then will be asked to follow the directions from the designated healthcare professional regarding COVID-19 test results. So if you were positive, of course, you would get a lot of instructions. Negative, you will know what that means to be negative and that this is a rapid test. We will then report the results of our day of testing to the state. When will schools close? Again, this can change as the guidelines continue to change. Right now, it says, if there are not enough parents who consent, districts would be forced to shut down and switch to all remote learning for schools in the zone. Also, if there weren't enough tests, I was assured today that New York State will have the test for us. If the random sampling generates, in another way, if the random sampling generates positive cases in any school for a sample size that we're using, that's 3% or more, then the school will be required to close to remote learning. Now, I will shift to some final thoughts and questions. There's a lot of information regarding these zones and the implication for schools. As such, we will post to our website the latest guidance and communication. The district has also created a frequently asked question document that will be updated with the most up-to-date information as it becomes available. The district continues to have regular conversations with Westchester County Government, George Latimer, our executive, and the Westchester County Department of Health. It's been very helpful, actually, in all of our cases and decisions. Contact tracing data shows the main driver of cases is household and small gatherings, so we have to adjust our behavior accordingly. Avoid these types of gatherings, wear a mask if you are gathering, and adhere to social distancing. Again, unfortunately, we are remote for the next few days, and as I said before, that any day we are in person is a blessing for us and our students. When we are in person, please continue to fill out sincerely the screening questionnaire. Also, please continue to not send your child to school if they are feeling ill in any way. We are also asking that you don't send your child to school if you are ill or you are COVID-19 positive. We want to do this because we know that this virus is really spreading in our community and across Westchester and the nation. So we ask that if your child doesn't feel well, please keep them home. Please contact the nurse. We have remote learning for your child if they feel well enough. We want to extend a huge thank you. First of all, to our school nurses, I have to send a thank you, and especially to Fiona Higgins, because she has helped me personally so much in understanding this. I really, again, want to thank our building leadership because we really are on the phone doing this contact tracing at night on the weekends. We're figuring out how we can open school when staff is out. They've done a wonderful job. Mr. Keough, Ms. Lee, Robin Dunn, who is the district clerk, but she also is my secretary, and she knows that I will, she knows to have her phone, like, by her bed. And I really do appreciate all the work. I appreciate the support of the board. I am hopeful, as we move forward with the vaccine and with what we learn about the virus. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present on these topics. We continue to be proactive in the process. It changes a lot, and there's a lot that we have to learn, so we don't have all the answers. Again, I'm doing this presentation proactively because we have not been determined to be a zone. I believe with the new way that we're just learning, the governor is assessing where the zones are, that we do have hospital, we have room in our hospitals in Westchester. It could change, but just like a week and a half ago, I was thinking something different than I think tonight. Of course, I don't know, but I want to be proactive and let you know that we do have a plan, and we are ready to do the testing to keep our schools open. It's very important to us. We appreciate the support of the community and, of course, the Board of Education, again, the teachers and staff throughout the, and the students throughout the pandemic. Thank you. Any questions?
How often does the state recalibrate or reassess our zone zoning? Is that a weekly thing?
That's a very good question, because that question has been asked, and when do they reassess our zone? And I was on the call tonight with, today, with New York State, and they did not give an answer. Like, I used to think it was Wednesdays, then I thought it was Mondays, and they said it could be anytime. Now, we will know ourselves if we're a zone because they will reach out personally to me, and so I'm always checking my email. Ms. Dunn fills out a form every single day that she gets from our schools as far as people who are positive, and on that form, it will tell us if we are in the zone. And then we have to put in data to show that we are testing. So we'll find out. It could be a surprise, but I will certainly keep the community informed. And we do have time to do the testing. It's not like we have to start that first day.
Yeah. And the testing, will it, generally speaking, be done during normal school hours?
So the way we are thinking of doing it right now is to do it on a asynchronous day. We want to make sure that parents can bring their students. I had a lot of requests from, certainly, college parents, but other parents too, who would like to be with their child when they're testing. It's not as invasive as a PCR test, if any of you have ever had that, but it still is. They go in the nasal cavity, and they, you know, have a swab, and parents will want, a lot of parents in our community want to be with our kids. And plus, we don't want to interrupt the instructional day. We want to be able to be supportive of our students and not just bring them down to have this test. We feel that we can get it done. We have really, we have come up with a plan of where the cars drive and where a student is let out. That can change in time because we're walking through it. But we also want to make sure that there's social distancing and kids have privacy during this process. You know, it's very different, and we don't want any student, I mean, it's hard enough during this time, but certainly not to feel anxious about what we're doing.
And the question I had was, I just lost it. So anybody else have anything? It'll come back to me.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I first want to thank you for being proactive. I just love that about just the way that the district has handled this entire situation. We weren't reactionary. We were thinking ahead, and I appreciate you and your leadership for that. Now, with the PCR, so it's the swab test. It's not the rapid test.
It is a rapid test.
It is the rapid test. So how, I thought, and I'll direct this even also to Teraz, I thought that that was not a very reliable test, so you could be getting all kinds of false negatives, false positives. So I'm not really sure why we're doing it if it's not a really good.
So I think that there's a couple of reasons, and I certainly, Ms. Cordier has a lot more information than I do. But from what I understand, the reason we're doing this is because it's screening. We will be able to get some positives out of this. New York State counts a positive as a positive. There are some conflicts with that too, because a PCR could be negative, and we're still going to count it as a positive. The thing about a 15-minute test is that we will not be waiting for results. If we were to give everybody the PCR test, if a student has a PCR test, they cannot come back until that test is sent to a laboratory and sent back. Now, as part of this process, if parents want, if their child is selected, they can go to a healthcare provider, wait for the test, and bring us a copy of the test being negative or positive. So that is an option for parents.
Are they allowed to still go to school?
When you're waiting for a test, you're not supposed to be going to school. That's the New York State rule.
That would be a little concerning if they had a false positive, and then they're missing school, right?
Right.
And then what about, where are we with, in your pre-planning, with privacy? HIPAA, you know, kids?
Right. So we did a consent form for consent for testing. In the consent form, when you really are chosen, it talks about HIPAA, what we're able to share and what we're not. So we would share your results if you're positive with New York State because we're required to do so. And so it does spell that out under New York State law and HIPAA law is what we're allowed to do. We're not going to be, you know, discussing or sharing private information that we're not allowed to share. But then again, as a school district who is providing the test, we will, just like a doctor, would share that data with the health department. Another thing that you said, Lori, that I just want to backtrack on a little bit, is that we do, we have been approached by a couple of people who have offered to be available in the village, let's say, to do some testing if parents wanted to pay for it themselves. Somebody who did testing in the village, I think it was over the summer.
We did. Yeah, Shyla did, for sure.
Yeah, I spoke to that gentleman. He would do that. There is a parent in Tuckahoe who also said that perhaps we could set up something with him. I don't know. With attorneys, we really have to be very careful going through that. He's also a laboratory, and he was, so we have certainly other plans, and parents on their own can go, and the person in the village was charging very little for it. The district is, from New York State Department of Health, we get the test for free. We could not afford to do it any other way. We partner with Westchester County as our laboratory. Again, all of this is free. The district going to any other level with all that we're spending in the pandemic, we really can't do that.
And they're not offering us free PCRs. They're only offering us free rapid.
That's what I mean. Yes.
So did they give you any statistics as to the sensitivity of the rapid? Because the rapids have different sensitivity depending on manufacturer.
Right.
And will that be disclosed to the parents or the patients before they consent to do the testing?
Well, we will have information on the Bynext Now test on the website. It's supposed to be more sensitive. I think that's why they chose it. But again, if we don't get enough people testing, we will not be able to open.
Right. And then how are they taking into account people, like, if, say, a child tested positive, right? We have had positive, or a faculty, staff member, whomever, was positive, are they then exempt? Because they could be non-contagious and still hold dead virus that will test positive on a PCR or a rapid test. And that's going to skew your statistics.
I think that's a great question.
Yes. I don't actually know more than you because I don't actually talk to Andrew Cuomo regularly about this. That may surprise you. But that's a question I would ask, so if you can talk to him, ask that question.
And I also, and I asked that question before, because when we do our contact tracing, we ask the Department of Health, if a person has had COVID-19 in the last three months, would they have to quarantine? And they have said no, because we have done this. I don't know if they have any statistics beyond those three months, but...
But they shouldn't be testing people as part, if you're looking for just like spread, community spread, right? You should not be testing somebody that you knew had it, say, eight weeks ago. Because they can still test positive.
Based on that, maybe we shouldn't ask the question. The reason why I say that is because it doesn't sound to me like we have to, we could do it any way we want, as long as we meet those numbers. So if we decide internally that we're not going to test those folks, then we just don't do it, as long as we're making, we're hitting the percentage and we're satisfying the requirement.
That needs to be a question that's asked.
I can add that.
If you're signing up.
What was that information?
Well, that's, yeah, that's right. That'd be well disclosed.
Definitely a bit of a stigma there. I mean, that's my one, two, I guess, questions. My other question is, let's say a staff member who doesn't live in our community tests positive, okay? Do they go into our zone count or their residential zone count?
So as far as our school zone count, I think that they go into their home zone count because they would go to the Department of Health, like, the contact tracers, you know, I'm not actually sure. I know what we report, we report them as ours, school district-wide. So I'm not, they should really go, so when we had somebody who was positive that was outside of Westchester, the contact tracers from where that person was from actually contacted the person. So that is what happens. But in terms of, so that's true. They go to another, whatever county they're in. They wouldn't get called by us. But most of our staff is in Westchester, maybe some are in Rockland, but what we report for our district, they count for us. Anybody who works with our students that we report will be part of that 20%. So it doesn't mean that they, the spread was from in school, that anybody could bring the spread from anywhere. But they just want to make sure that there's a lower positivity rate in the school than in the community if we are a zone. So there are many reasons why New York State might be doing this, but if we use all the mitigation strategies that we're using, if we are diligently using them in school, it will be a safe place to be. And if we start to veer from the testing and, you know, find some other loopholes, I mean, I think we can discuss all that, but I'm concerned that we at least get the right percentage of parents, because this is the process that we have right now. I know it's hard to hear, and it changes all the time.
You know, I just want to make sure it's accurate, because they're making big decisions to, like, close schools based on percentages, and if you happen to be randomly selected, and we're a small N, right? So like, a couple of people that maybe were, had it or were exposed or tested positive at one point could skew your numbers significantly, where you may end up closing the school with information that really isn't pertinent.
That's true. I think you have a good point there. 3% in a smaller district could be, you know, a lot scarier to easily go on.
We don't have the same padding. And then are they looking at, like, wastewater and comparing it to?
I, well...
Wastewater.
I just, because they, like, and we get wastewater reports in Connecticut where they're looking at virus within the wastewater, right? They do analysis and stuff. And so I'm all for making decisions as long as they're, you know, based in real facts and science and not, like, I just, that's, I think, what, and not, I'm not trying to make this political at all, but I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing and we're getting clean data.
Right.
And maybe we, as a district, need to ask the state before they impose these regulations on us that were, that they've thought it out properly or that they're, maybe nobody's asking them the questions. I don't know. But I feel like there are big decisions being made, and we should make sure the data's clean.
Yes, and I would say that, the one thing I have to say that I'm finally happy is the state is starting to look at data because they are finally saying that schools should be open. You know, it was very different in the spring and even early this year when we were saying one thing and we weren't necessarily being supported everywhere. I think that there's two things. I agree with you, like, we want to follow the science. That's what we have been trying to do as a school district all along, but also, we want to make sure that we stay open, and, you know, one of the ways we're going to end up closing is if we don't test the percent of students. So I don't know how quickly things will change, but again, yeah, I'd like to, I'm not a doctor, and I would like, and actually, I know a lot of pediatricians, because I'm on this group, that have written to Governor Cuomo, which is, they believe possibly why schools, you know, there's a real push to keep schools open now. Things have really changed, I would say, in the last, like, four weeks with what we're hearing from the state about the safety of schools being open. So I think that there's two things at play, following the science, which is what we've always said, and our reopening committee has been incredibly strong, our Health and Wellness Committee. But to reopen schools, we need to, we need to follow the protocol also, or else we're not going to be able to open schools. So I guess it's both, but certainly, doctors and healthcare workers who know should definitely reach out to, you know, the governor and the Department of Health. And we, you know, people in that field have been trying to, and I think some of the changes And I think some of the changes are based on the science.
Therese, you're concerned about not getting clean data. Is it derived from testing somebody who's had it already and having that dead virus? Or is there other scenarios in which?
That's the main thing.
That's the way.
And also, I, I mean, I don't know. I know some PCR tests, when compared to the rapids, were actually very sensitive, but others weren't. I'm not familiar with this one, so I don't, I don't know anything about it. I mean, I'll look at it, but that matters because it's free and it's what we have to use.
Yeah.
But there's something about this that seems very like, I don't know.
And is it, is it true that the rapid is usually more often going to give you a false positive than a false negative? Is that a fair, is that a fair statement?
No, it's either way. Some of them are only, they're 20%,
Either way.
False, period, false negative, false positive. And unless you back it up with the PCR.
Right.
And then again, even the PCR, to be honest with you, if it's not administered properly, and people don't go far enough into the nasopharynx, you're going to get false negative, right? So there's so many different things. I mean, obviously, you're talking now high 90s for, you know, sensitivity overall. But I think for me, and especially knowing that we're a small district, and knowing that we've had kids who have tested positive just on household screenings and they went to get tested and, oh, I'm positive because dad was, but I never had a symptom. Like, those kids could still have, I'm sure adults, I'm saying, I'm sure adults too, but like, so they could still test positive up to 12 weeks after.
No, no, it makes sense. So why couldn't we, if we had to do this, a name comes up on the random screening, we contact that, that parent and ask that question? I don't know, is it improper to ask their question?
I was just going to say the same thing. I think that because.
They don't have to answer, you could say, if you've tested positive in the last 12 weeks, please don't take this test.
Right, and then, and then the answer to that question is yes. With that question, we just skip over them. And as long as we're meeting that 20%, what does it matter?
Right, because the same thing would happen with the PCR test. And it's very frustrating when people get retested also. It skews the numbers in the county even because they still have the virus even though they're not contagious or actively symptomatic in any way. So I think that that's, we could do that, we could just ask them.
I would just make that decision, the district just do it.
And then go to the next randomly selected, because I think that that's the science. I don't think we'd be in any trouble because we, I've already had the discussion with the county when we were doing contact tracing. That very discussion, would this person have to be quarantined? And they said no.
I just have a comment.
Yeah, good.
So two questions, just to start with. So the 20% is of students and staff. And when you sent out that email, the original, and did you get the numbers that you would want for that 20%? And I guess the second question to follow that one would be, is the staff a random sort of mandated thing? Or are they also voluntarily saying yes or no?
I actually wrote this down because I just thought you were going to ask that.
And just to build on that, is it 20% of the district or 20% of each school?
Okay, so let me just go back and ask, answer the first question that Laura asked is, 583 people responded and 443 said they would test. So we had a very positive response. I think people really want this school to be open. Additionally, what was the second question?
So in this, how does it work with the staff? Because it's 20%, is it 20% of each building?
Yeah, so we were told, when we've gone through this, that it's not 20% of the total, but it's 20% of the faculty and staff and 20% of the students. Now, of course, today when we were on our training, we kind of report 20% in one lump of, you know, the in-person people. But we have already broken it down by school, we broke it down by staff and students, and we know what it would look like, at least based on now, in person. But they make you report the in-person every day. So when it changes, like, just recently, a lot of high school students and some middle school students went remote before the holidays, but it might look different after the holidays, or maybe three weeks after the holidays. So we go on the current data. And again, it's faculty and staff that works with the students, and then it's the students themselves. It'd be 20% of in-person. It's not 20%, so let's say Cottle has 520 in-person students. It would be 20% in yellow and orange over the month. And it couldn't be one day, it would have to be either weekly or bi-weekly. And if it was red, it would be 30%. But I understand what you're saying too, again, about that 3% or more. We could get there because we're so small. Because when you look at the small numbers, it really hurts us.
I'm sorry, is it 20% of the district or 20% of each school?
It's each school.
Each building?
Right, sorry.
And 20%.
And so is, are we considering middle school, high school, one building?
No, we're doing them separate. And actually, our beds code, even though we have one leadership, is separate building, so we can.
Okay.
And you report that monthly?
You would, you report that daily.
Oh, okay.
But you have to get the certain percentage over the month.
Over the course of the month, with that spread.
So if anybody decides, you know, or they go to their own doctor, they go to the village, wherever they go, that'll, everything counts because it comes back to the school district.
It counts if you're randomly chosen. So when you get the call and you're randomly chosen, and we might set something up or you might have a doctor and you want to do a different kind of test, you can say, I'm going to bring you the results. Because we have the month to get them.
What process are we using to do the random selection?
We're still talking about it.
Okay, I'm thinking about it, all right. And will there be, I'm sorry, will there be like a, I assume when a child comes in or a staff member takes a test, will there be some sort of paper or form that will be filled out?
Yes, we have, we're preparing, because we also spoke to districts that have already done it. So we're preparing labels, we're preparing folders, we're preparing baskets of timers. Like, we have really broken it down by what we need to do, yes. And there will be a consent, again, not like the Google doc, but.
So all that paperwork and labels, do we have a process for where it's going to be secured? So that it's secure, nobody can come in and look at it and read it?
Yeah.
For HIPAA?
The separate we do with all our data.
Okay.
I just want to make one last comment on the test. I did actually look up this, so there are a number of rapid tests, the Binax, right? By Abbott, I think is the company. They, they have the one that, that seems to be the most sensitive one. I think maybe that's why obviously the state picked it. But one, just an interesting thing, and maybe to go back with when you have conversations. It's sensitive in that if the community spread is at a certain percentage, in other words, if your population is showing a significant amount of numbers, then the test becomes obviously more accurate because you're in a pool that, that's going to show more numbers that correlates with. In other words, it's called like a PBV number, statistically speaking. But just another point about it is that it really was designed, and it was a small sample that they, they used, but it's designed for people with symptoms from day one to seven. If it's symptomatic, day eight, or if it's even pre-symptoms, it doesn't want to pick it up.
Right.
So it's very sensitive to symptoms. So just an interesting question back to Mr. Cuomo would be, in that population of what we're doing random, assuming asymptomatic, viral-free perhaps, there has been no studies on that. So we're essentially kind of providing data to the state for that, because that's what we're doing. We're basically doing a study.
Right.
And, and there is a false positive, although I did look at some other states that have been using this Massachusetts. It's one that's been using it for a little while and they, they've rolled it out. And there's a couple of districts up there that tested, for example, in one day, 300 to 500 students, and there was one or two positives. So, and I'm not, that's not a statistical number that we have to run with at all. But it does seem like, to me, there is a chance of false positives, there's a chance of false negatives. Which, think about that, that's also, someone is, could be pre-symptomatic. In other words, it's negative because the test is made for symptoms and the next day they pick symptoms, right? And they come to school.
That's why we're going to cancel each person after the test. Part of our process is 15 minutes you go and then you will be canceled, number one, if you're positive. What you do, but if you're negative, that this is not, and this is what I think people are not necessarily understanding, negative doesn't mean that you stop wearing a mask, that you stop socially distancing, that if you don't feel well tomorrow, that that's not a symptom of this. We know it's all about timing, so.
So I just thought that was.
And you're right, instead of just saying you're negative, you're positive, there, one of the processes is a discussion with the parent.
And I know it's state, this is all data. This is all to, you know, are we 3%? Are we 4%? Are we 2%?
It's all part.
And it's all very not scientific, to be honest. It's not real, doesn't make, if it was this test that was proven to show very sensitive, like the PCR is a very sensitive test, it will pick up small, sometimes maybe even too much. Someone doesn't even have symptoms and it picks up very small viral. Could have had it weeks and weeks ago when they're still picking it up. But my point is that I think we should all, I'm saying it's, you know, it's going to be a state thing and then obviously it's the test that they send. So I think that there's some positives in that, the number of other school districts that have used it, there wasn't a lot of positives, false positives coming back. I mean, and there's a couple of schools that I looked at up in Massachusetts, so.
Yeah, and all the school districts that did it here, you know, doesn't Osmond, Yonkers, doesn't, New Rochelle, doesn't seem like they, it seems like they haven't had a lot of positives. So I don't know, it would look like there aren't false positives, but there may be false negatives. So we need to just understand this is a quick screening. It's not the Panacea, it's not the best, it's not the PCR, but it's what we're getting. And it's somehow that we can use it. I'm sure there's some data that we're going to get from it. Certainly, students are positive and staff, even if they get the PCR, even if it drives them to get that, that could be a really good thing. But it also is some way that we don't go back to the spring. Like, we cannot go back to last spring. You know, we have to make sure that we use the mitigation strategies in our school district and outside of our school district so that we can stay safe and we can provide in-person schooling for those students who benefit from it, which again, some of our special needs students, our very young students, our elementary students, and lots of students do better in person. So there's a catch 22 to it. It is not ideal, but we also know that last year, last spring, was far from ideal. So if anything, hopefully quarantining is going to change and will be more like other states. The six feet and a mask won't necessarily take down whole classes of people. So there's some things that may change over time. But I do think that if we use the mitigation strategies, that, you know, it's, it's a way for us to stay open. It's not a test that people should take and totally think that they don't have this virus.
Well, the bottom line is, it's not like we have a choice. It's going to be mandated on us. But I think our concerns, the concerns that have been.
And I think we could, you could send those concerns to me. I could certainly send them to the state, or you can even send them yourself.
We're saying that the more, the more dramatic, as has been said before, because of how small our school is, our numbers, our threshold is so low, our numbers can sway so easily because of how small we are. So I think it's a valid concern, but ultimately, it's what's mandated upon us.
But I also think that it is something I will personally bring up because I think Therese is right because of how small we are, that I don't know if they've done this with any really little district. It seems like these larger districts are already in the yellow zone and we're very small. And again, it could be just that little group that can easily, because there's so few people, throw us over. So I will definitely ask that question. I think that's really very valid.
So you mentioned something about, about.
It's right, that's what we have.
Yeah, but you mentioned something about, I wanted to bring it up too, to revisit it because of the possibility of maybe in this situation. And regardless of where our numbers are, if we're testing 20%, we're going to have more, we're going to get more positives, right? So you mentioned about the safe distancing and maybe things changing. The policy that we're following right now with our contact tracing, we have a positive right now and we are identifying through contact tracing who's been exposed and we're making them quarantine. Is that policy internal to our district or is that, okay? Because the reason why I say that, and this, hopefully this is going to change, I think you kind of alluded to it, is that, you know, if we are doing everything right in terms of six feet and masks, I'm not sure why we're considering those people exposed, right? If they, and I know this has been talked about before, but I mean, I just bring it up again because it's even more of an issue if we're going to get put into the yellow zone and we're going to be testing more, we're going to get more positives, and if we're going to have that loose of a, of a determination of what's exposed, we're going to be quarantining everybody all the time. And it just seems silly because if we're following these practices to stop the spread, then I'm not sure why people in those co-arts are considered exposed if they have masks on their six feet apart.
Absolutely, 100% in agreement with you from everything that I've read in the science and how some other states are doing it. You know, six feet and masks should not take down somebody in the back of the class. If a teacher's six feet, we've given them N95 masks, we've given them desk shields to use, we've given them face shields if they want to use them. And we've given them, and we have the kids six feet apart, I agree.
So you think that's something?
And hopefully that will change, I mean, we have.
You think it might change? Have you had any rumbling, heard any rumblings about that change?
I've heard rumbling that that's going to change. I heard rumbling that the quarantine period's going to change because, you know, the CDC changed it.
Seven, seven days rather than 14.
So that could really change this whole, you know, when we go remote drastically for districts. And, you know, I am, I think New York State, I don't want to scare people. And, you know, this is a scary virus and people get very sick. But we are still doing relatively well, which may not be a great thing because the rest of the country is in far worse states than we are. But as Tuckahoe, and because we're so small, we can really do the right thing. We really should try to do the right thing because our kids love school, our teachers love our kids, and they benefit from it. So we have the control, test or no test, in what we do, not just in school, but outside of school.
Yeah. Okay.
On that note, just since we're on the topic, Shiloh Baptist Church is offering COVID testing on Wednesday. The PCR in your news, the real one. And so it will be open to anybody, so feel free to come. And you can call the church and get the particulars, but you can come over right here in Tuckahoe in the village. Anybody can come and have that testing done. We're partnering with whatever, I forget the new agency, but whatever, I can send you the information, email.
Thank you, that's great. And I do have two, one is a gentleman who works in, who worked, who lives in Tuckahoe, who also, maybe not on our grounds, but maybe on public, the church ground or some other public grounds can do the testing, plus the one that, or the person who already did it in the village. Because I think that if people prefer PCR, both of them promise a quick turnaround time. And what you're doing on Wednesday, I do invite people, thank you so much for doing.
I'm praying that the weather will make it so that it can continue because the weather isn't supposed to be so great, so we'll see about that. But even if it is, we're hoping that it could be rescheduled if push came to shove.
And also, please wait five days if you're quarantined to get tested.
All right, great. Well, it was a long discussion, but it was good. It was important, important stuff. Luckily, we have a pretty short agenda, so it wasn't so, it's not so bad.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's, that's important stuff, though. You know, it's, it's obviously a lot of concern. All right, so next we have our first recognition of the audience. For anyone that wants to speak about any agenda items, agenda items only for the first recognition. Anybody? Nope? All right, so we'll move on to rest of the agenda. Our first item is our consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda items two through eight. Do we have a motion? Laura, second, Therese? Any discussion? Any other items? Nope? All in favor? Okay, next business of the board. Our first item is not an item to vote on, it's just a second reading of our amended policies. There are two policies that are being amended, the homeless children's policy, 5151, and parent and family engagement policy, 6318. Both of these policies had some amendments to them due to some legal, to comply with the legal changes. And I'm not going to read them, but they're available on the website or on the board docs if you want to read it. This is the second time we're mentioning that, and the next time we'll vote them in, correct?
We'll vote them in today.
Oh, we're voting them in today?
Yes.
Just two reads?
Yes, just two readings.
Thank God Robbie's here. Okay, so do I have a motion for these two policies? Therese, Laura's second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Robbie.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item is disciplinary appeal. Resolve that the Board of Education at the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby denies the student discipline appeal made by the parent of student ID number 11753. Do we have a motion? Lori, second, Therese? All in favor? All in favor? Next, adopt a new records retention schedule. Resolved by the Board of Education, Toccoho Union Free School District, the Westchester County, of Westchester County, that retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records issued pursuant to Article 57-A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all offices and legal disposing and valueless records listed therein. Further resolved that in accordance with Article 57-A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in retention disposition schedule for New York local government records after they have met the minimum retention period described therein. Only those records will be disposed of that due, oh, I'm sorry, only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond established legal minimum periods. Do I have a motion? Therese, second, Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? Next, approve additional construction management services. Whereas Toccoho Union Free School District and Calji Construction Company Incorporated entered into an agreement dated April 11, 2018, for construction management services for capital projects approved by the school district voters on April 10, 2018. And whereas the construction schedule for the capital project for which Calji Construction Company Incorporated provided construction management services anticipated completion of the projects in January 2020. However, construction activities continued into November 2020. Now therefore be resolved that for the additional construction management services provided by Calji Construction Company pursuant to Article 4 of the agreement, the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District authorizes payment to Calji Construction Company in the amount of $50,000. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District authorizes and empowers the superintendent of schools and assistant superintendent for business to take all actions necessary to implement the purposes of this resolution. Do I have a motion? Therese, second, Laura. Any discussion? Listen, do you want to just make a comment about this? I know we've talked about it already.
Right, so due to several unforeseen circumstances that arose during the construction project through no fault of Calji Construction, the construction project did extend much further than was anticipated, even with a built-in allowance for unforeseen circumstances. Some of those were the discovery of the oil tank, some difficulty with Con Ed and our representation with Con Ed. The COVID-19 did cause some delays as well as some difficulty with the concrete pour. All those caused the project to lose the summer, original summer construction period. And then we ran into needing to curtail construction during the first main part of the day due to noise concerns in the district. So all those things combined did cause the construction to go on eight months beyond when we anticipated ending the construction. And during all that time, Calji Construction did provide ongoing services that were invaluable, I believe, to the construction project itself, and they're requesting additional payment, which is significantly below the number of hours that they put in in addition, and I'm presenting that to the board tonight.
Yeah, I initially had some questions, concerns about this, as I think other board members did, and I think the way you laid it out is the reason why I'm ultimately okay with it. You know, my first inclination was they're a management company, if we're over scheduled, isn't that sort of their responsibility or their, or their, you know, did they have any sort of blame for that, if you will? But I do think a lot of those delays that you laid out were legitimate delays that were outside their, you know, command or their ability to effect. And I think I would have a bigger issue with it if they were asking for the full amount of their, of those services, but they're now, they're asking for a much lower amount. So I think the amount that they're, they're asking for, given the amount of legitimate delays, is appropriate. If they were asking for the full amount, I'd probably have a little more of an issue with that. So I'm in support of it, given the amount that they're asking for. Any other discussion or questions or concerns? All right, all in favor? Okay, last item for business is approve a refunding bond resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Toccoho Union Free School District hereby approves a resolution entitled Refunding Bond Resolution of the Toccoho Union Free School District, New York, adopted December 14, 2020, authorizing the refund, the refunding of certain outstanding serial bonds of said district, stating the plan of refunding, appropriating an amount not to exceed $1,900,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of not, the issuance of not to exceed $1,900,000 refunding serial bonds of the district to finance said appropriation and making certain other determinations all relative thereto. Very confusing language, well, do I have a motion? Motion? Therese, second, Laura. This is essentially refinancing our bonds, essentially for better terms, correct?
Right, our financial advisors review our bonds periodically, and these are two outstanding bonds from, I believe, 2008 and 2010. They found that interest, the differential in interest rates and the callability of the bonds allows them to be refunded at this time, which would save the district, I believe the number is about $167,000 they're anticipating over the maturity of the bonds, and that's net of all the refunding costs, right? So we would receive a benefit even in this fiscal year as we go forward.
Great, okay. All in favor? Okay, last item is personnel. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through F as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Therese, second, Lori. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, great. And lastly, second recognition of the audience for any topic at all. Allison?
Hi. Allison Halloran, you guys can hear me, right? Mask on, okay. Allison Halloran.
You're, you're far enough away from us if you want to take your mask, I mean, you're pretty far away, so if you want to take it off, it's fine with me.
That's fine. I just have, I have a couple of questions about the presentation that you just did, Dr. Gorman. The, the zone that the school is in, like, because we have so many kids from the three different zip codes, and then you were emailed last week, you mentioned something about our zip code, and it made me think, like, do we fall into 10709 because that's the schools? Yes, okay, so.
No, no.
Oh, okay. So you're just shaking your head.
No, I'm just, I understand your question.
So when we have kids who are positive and we have to report that, do they get reported, like, to their living zip code? So it could be 10708, which then is the Bronx, like Bronxville, or 10709, Eastchester, like, where do we, because it's so diff, you know, the numbers on the town chart?
Right.
Or is it just one big town, Eastchester?
So what happened last year, as you remember, we like got swept right into New Rochelle when, that's not a town that, you know, it might be next to us, but it's not a town, a city that we interact with that much. So when I spoke to Executive Latimer, actually this year, before all this started, I said, please, whenever you do with these zones, it really wasn't fair to us that we were swept up that way. And we spoke about Eastchester, Bronxville, Toccoho. And I do believe that what will happen is that we will, you know, get the three, the three towns, because they do make up our school district, like, if Eastchester's high, even if more of Eastchester's school might be high or vice versa, because we're both in the school district, I believe that we will, I spoke to the superintendent, I'm like, we're going to be in the same boat. If Bronxville or Toccoho was high, I think definitely Toccoho, I believe, and we have people living in Bronxville, so I believe, and from my discussion with him, again, he would have to talk to New York State. And I, and he promised me he would around New Rochelle, and I guess he did. And he would, he does see Eastchester, Bronxville, and Toccoho being together in that way. I mean, I don't know what they'll end up doing, but we did have that discussion as far as Toccoho was concerned, because we're in all of those zip codes.
Right. So.
So it wouldn't be just the zip code that our school district is in, I don't believe.
Okay. So then, I mean, my other concern then is if Eastchester's school has higher than their 3%, how does that affect us, being that we have, you know, we have, that's part of our zip code and, and certainly the school's address is in Eastchester?
So.
Even though I think the majority of your students actually have Bronxville.
Right. So what I think would happen is that they would, we would be designated because we'd be a yellow, orange, or red zone, let's say, however they figure it out. And I can't say how they'll figure it out because somehow they'll figure it out. But let's say Eastchester School District and we were both yellow, orange, or red, we would then have to test 20% or 30% of our own students.
Right.
And that would be on us. So we wouldn't have to continue if we had a low amount of students in yellow, it's like a one and done. In orange and red, if we were considered in that community, that would be, you know, let's face it, our kids do, if anywhere our parents and our kids probably do interact more with those communities than other ones we're grew into, we would just have to continue testing. But if we were testing and we were very low, then we would test out of having to do that in the yellow zone. Again, orange and red is continuous, and when we go, if we go that, to that, we would have ongoing discussions with the Department of Health, with the county executive's office, who has been very open to us. But, you know, I am just trying to answer this the best I can, I have no idea, and I could, it changes really, I, all the time, like, on a weekly basis, but those are good questions. That's the way I feel it would work, though.
Okay, thanks. My other question about the presentation is, you said if a child or a parent does not consent to testing, even on that, like, even if I signed it saying I am, but then that day my kid decides no, there's no penalty, so they can just go, come back to school the next day, nothing, no reason that they could not attend school.
Right, right. Like, we wouldn't have a kid, a student crying and, you know, you know, all of that. It's not worth it to us to traumatize a child or make anybody upset, we would go to the next student. But again, we are hopeful, and we had such a great response to our original outreach, that people will talk to their kids, of course, our nurses are so compassionate, you know, they will help the student do this, just the same way as students go to the doctor, we would present it in the most positive way. Because again, we would never force anybody to do something like this, but we also want to make sure that we, you know, that kids understand they're doing their school district, their duty to do this, and this is how we stay open, and it's important that we're all healthy, and we can explain to them even the test, you know, that it's not the most accurate test, but it is a way that our school district can continue to function. So we want it to be a positive experience, but yes, the way I see it, there's no penalty for students.
Okay. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment on your presentation on the workshop last week with the strategic plan. You and Mr. Keog did a fantastic job, thank you very much for it. It was well thought out, well planned, and well presented. I really did like your idea of the Toccoho Equity Team. The plan sounds great, I'm excited to see what that, what information comes out of that. But one issue that I did have with the presentation is similar to what Pete had brought up, that, that goal of the diversity of learners. When, when the goal was made, it wasn't so much about ethnicity, it was more about the diverse, the different ways that children need to learn. And we did follow a lot, you guys did follow a lot, during the presentation and after the presentation, there was a lot of discussion regarding the best ways to reach out to our struggling students and how our struggling families, and there were all a lot of great suggestions and a lot of good conversation regarding our curriculum, and a lot of, came out of it. But one thing that I just want to point out is that there is another group of students in our district who are very underserved, and that is the high achieving learner. We do a great job once they get to high school, but from the time the high achieving learner enters this district, up until eighth grade, we do nothing for them. And this has been something that's certainly not the current administration's, you know, fault by any means, but it is something that I would like you guys to fix. For years, we have been asking for programs and learning differentiation to really access, you know, for the, for the high achieving learner, and it's been constantly shut down, shut down, shut down, because all anybody ever thinks of is a gifted and talented program, and it doesn't need to go that far, we just need something. Because what ends up happening is we don't do anything until the eighth grade, and by that point, parents are frustrated, and very often, that's the reason why they look to leave for high school without really even looking at the high school for what we offer, because we do offer a lot in the high school for such a small district. But by that point, the families are turned off, frustrated, and like not even willing to look. And the other thing is that when we don't offer something to younger high achieving students, all we do is continually show them that schoolwork is easy and that they don't have to work as hard, and it's been my experience that basically they learn that it is always going to be easy. And then when it's not any longer, they don't have, they haven't developed the skills to then succeed because they, they're like older than everybody else, learning that like, that schoolwork can be hard. And so it's really important, in my opinion, to start to offer things to the high achieving learner, really at coddle and not waiting until the end of middle school. I just wanted to bring that up, I just want, I don't want to lose that, you know, everything you said in your strategic plan was great, but I really don't want to lose that piece of it because it was a big part of that diverse learning goal. Thank you.
Thank you. And when we present the budget, we hope to present to all of those issues that you mentioned tonight.
I think, I think it's an excellent point, thank you, Allison, appreciate it. Okay, nobody else, right? Nope. Okay, so that comes to the end, motion to adjourn the meeting. Therese, Cynthia, all in favor? All right, good night, everybody, happy, safe holiday. Thank you.[1778.76][1778.76]